Huh? Oh, you're fine.
You're good. Make us walk a little bit.
We need steps.
I get the point.
I was getting the names in order. There's nobody here.
We did that one time. It was hard for him.
It's a little tongue twister almost. You want to do that in MTC, you want to do it. Come on, guys, let's all speak Spanish. And they all got mad at him after a while. And so, for him to be able to go there and go straight Spanish all the time, it's like, okay. It's good. You wanted that. He was here.
So I've got one of my kids that plays soccer for me.
Oh, okay. They, uh, they hadn't expected him because he had the switch in the hall, right? And so, he had to go here because they didn't have space for him.
I'll just give it, let me just give it to you.
He literally goes, he goes, "So I'm gonna push it until I hit the skull, and then I just pull back a little bit."
Really?
Thank you, that makes me feel great.
I did not think that was gonna happen.
I did not want it that. I'm gonna sit right here, I think.
You're gonna sit right there.
Um...
Am I gonna be in your way? If I need to be on the other side of you, or is this okay?
I think I'm okay. Once I get this up, then I just have to hit the button. I'm good. The nerve block.
That's right.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone out. I'd like to welcome everyone out to the Planning Commission meeting Thursday, September 6, 2018. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance by Matt Watson.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a full quorum today, which is nice. And then, first item of business is 1.3, approval of minutes for July 19, 2018, and August 2, 2018.
Move to approve the minutes from July 19 and August 2, 2018.
I'll second that.
Motion by Lauren and a second by Adam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Today, is there any conflict of interest with any of the items? All right, then we'll move right into it. So we do have one item on for public hearing, 2.2. So we will have that today. Just to address that, anything with public hearing. The purpose of the public comment is to allow citizens to address items on the agenda. Citizens requesting to address, the commission will be asked to complete a written comment form in the back of the room and present it to Wendy Thorpe, deputy recorder. And will allow individual three minutes to address the commission. We'll start off with item 2.1, review and approval of park amenities for Creek Ridge West. City staff?
Yes, so, we approved this phase of Creek Ridge a few months ago. The, the park amenities were required to come back to you for approval. So again, this is out west, just south of Harriman Boulevard. So here's the park plan they are proposing. They have been working with our Parks Department. And Parks has made some few changes and revisions, and Parks is happy with it now. Other than the trees we talked about. Again, the, the park strip got removed on this side when we added the parking. So we just want to make sure that the park strip trees basically are replaced behind the sidewalk, along the side here. So I can show you the other kind of details of the park. There is a pavilion, a playground. That's what I've got. The applicant is here if you have any further questions about the park. This is just for your review and approval.
Thank you, Bryn. If the applicant's here, will you please come forward? Just state your name.
All right, good evening. My name is Brandon Watson with Edge Homes. I appreciate you guys taking a look at this park tonight. And I really don't have much to add. It's a pretty straightforward park, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions from the Planning Commission?
Oh, all right.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time. We'll let you have a seat. I'll turn the time over to the Planning Commission. Any comments or...
I think it looks great. It just needs to have the trees along the southern road, so.
All right, then, we'll turn to the Planning Commission for a motion.
I move to approve item 2.1 with, as proposed, with an additional requirement that the trees that are along, the tree spacing along 6400 West is mimicked on the southern road behind the sidewalk.
Along Oceanside.
I didn't know the name, so.
Yeah, that's Oceanside.
Whatever the south, along the south side. Along the south side road or Oceanside.
I second.
All right, motion by Adam and a second by Brody. We'll start off on this side. Lauren?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
And Brody?
Yes.
All right, that motion is approved unanimously. We'll move on to item 2.2, and this is on for a public hearing. So we'll turn first to the city staff.
All right, this is a, a plat, just for two commercial lots. You can see here kind of the vicinity, so you can tell this is Mountain View, Real Vista, the RSL Academy is here. We're just doing a plat here to create these two pods, basically, so they can sell these lots for future development. So they will come in in the future with site plans and likely additional plot amendments on these. Just the two lots right now.
Thank you, Bryn. Is the applicant here? You want to come forward, Matt?
Matt Watson, representing Rosecrest Communities. Yeah, I think Bryn explained it pretty straightforward, just kind of cleaning up these, these two lots. So we actually did a plat several years ago. I think it was back in 2012 was when it was recorded, called the South Harriman Plat, that divided this area into several big lots. And part of that, purpose of that was putting together the CDA at that time. And so, being able to attach the CDA to specific parcels in the area, and then also dedicating some of the right-of-way that was part of right-of-way corridor preservation. So this is just kind of going back in and, and cleaning up these two lots, some additional right-of-way to be dedicated for Mountain View Corridor and Real Vista, and then ultimately to, to sell these two off. So you'll see future subdivisions and site plans as that commercial gets developed out. Bryn brought up in the work meeting, there was a question about the sidewalk around these two parcels. So currently on Autumn Crest Boulevard, there's existing sidewalk. And on Academy Parkway, there's an existing trail. The, the trail was put in place in lieu of a sidewalk. I don't know if you remember when Real, the Soccer Academy came in and they had that section of Academy. They worked out with the city to do a trail in, in place of a sidewalk there. We are actually currently under construction with the widening of Real Vista to, to complete that, to build out. And as part of that construction, we're constructing sidewalk and trail along that road as well. So along Pod 35, it will be sidewalk, just like it is on Autumn Crest Boulevard.
Match there, yeah.
And then on Pod 39, adjacent to Real Vista Drive, that will be a trail, just like it is along Academy Parkway. Thank you. Those improvements will, will all be done and in there. And there are other sewer and water stubs that have already been done as part of those roadway projects around it. Again, there'll be more, more plans and improvements to go in as those develop out.
All right, thank you, Matt. Is there any questions from?
I have one.
Planning Commission?
Pod 34 and Pod 52 are residential, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
This is open for a public hearing, so I will open that at this time. If there's any comments from anyone. I will now close this public hearing, and I'll turn to the Planning Commission.
Well, my issue earlier is resolved. Yeah, my only other thing is just having, requiring a six-foot precast fence between 39 and 52 and 35 and 34, so. That's it for me.
Can I address that comment?
Yes.
As far as timing of that, with what we're proposing here, with no development on these two lots, we would propose that that fencing go in at the time of improvements, you know, buildings, construction going in, in these two pods.
Understand your perspective. I don't know where you all stand, but I think it needs to be required. I don't really know about timing, and I wasn't gonna put it in timing for fencing, but I think it needs to be addressed now and put it as a requirement. As far as when the city staff requires it to be installed, that's up to, to them. But I don't know how you all feel about that.
I, I think that makes sense to at least require it as something that needs to be put in. I think the city staff can work with the developers on when it needs to be put in.
I agree. Now, those 34 and 52 already have residences in them at this time? Or are they, are they?
They are both under construction. So Pod 52, the first phase of, the first and second phase of subdivision improvements are done. Vertical constructions, constructions going on on both of those. I don't believe any COs are on 52. Pod 34 is also under construction, phase at a time. That, Pod 52's vertical development is the developer there. Pod 34 is Edge Homes. They do have a building up on 34 and may have, may have COs on that building. If they do, it's one, one building. So, but both of those are in progress. So, I mean, I don't have an issue with the requirement. I guess I would just say that if that's your ordinance, it's not necessarily needing to be a requirement.
Anything else from the Planning Commission? Then I'll turn to the Planning Commission for a motion.
Let me, let me just ask, I think, I agree with what he's saying, is, Wendy. Is the, doesn't our ordinance already require a fence between the two, when the time? Just in general ordinances?
Our current ordinance requires a fence between commercial and residential. The ordinance they're vested under would not have had that requirement at the time.
Correct.
Okay.
So it would need to be in there.
So, so they're, under their development agreement, it did not require it?
They're vested under the ordinance from 10 years ago.
As well as our ordinance does not say when it has to have a fence.
The ordinance does not say when.
So it doesn't describe whether that's at subdivision phase or, or building permits.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Anybody else? Before I make a motion?
Nope.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2.2 with staff's two recommendation and an additional third to require a six-foot fence between Pod 34 and 35 and a Pod 39 and 52. The timing to be discussed with city staff.
What kind of fence?
Six-foot solid precast. I didn't say the sidewalk, because I think it's been achieved with the trail. My issue was just walkability, so I'm good.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Adam and a second by Andrew. And we'll start on this side with Brody.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
And Lauren?
Yes.
We do have one item on, one legislative item, where it would be potentially a recommendation to the city council, item 3.2. And that's discussion of a proposed text change to the land development code to create an auto mall special district. And the applicant on this is the city. So we'll turn to Bryn.
So this is, like I said, this is on for just discussion tonight. We did not put it on for public hearing. We wanted to just go through it once, make sure, you know, see if you guys have any comments, questions, concerns. And then we'll bring it back in two weeks for public hearing, and then possibly a decision at that time. Recommendation to the council. So again, like we've talked about, this is, this is the area we're talking about. This is Mountain View Corridor, 12600 to south, and then Main Street, which is built to about there right now. But Main Street will run along the side of this property here. We are leaving out, the bottom portion is commercial. We, we had originally talked about having commercial uses within the auto mall district, but we have since separated that. And, and basically only auto, boat, RV dealers are allowed in this district. No other commercial uses, the way we have it at this point. Commercial would be, we'd just leave this C2 here, and we're planning an area of C2 commercial in this area. You know, we'd just leave those out as separate commercial, just to keep it pure, just for the, the dealers.
And directly north is the Anthem Commercial as well, right?
The Anthem Commercial what? Is right here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, just right above it, yeah. So again, this is a, not an overlay zone, it says that, but it's not. It's a special district because it only applies to this property. Specific location, so it can't be used anywhere else. Again, the way we've done the uses is new car dealerships are permitted use. Any used dealerships or new dealerships for other, you know, RVs, boats, or whatever, would be the conditional uses. Right now, these are the, these are the only uses we have in this zone. Like I said, no other retailer or services in this zone. The architecture, and I'm, this kind of goes through the ordinance in the order of the ordinance, so if you want to look at your ordinance as we go through. The architecture, like we talked about, is, for the new dealers, is pretty specific from the dealer, what the building has to look like. So we're, we're not being too specific on those requirements. Any used dealership or other type of, you know, perhaps RV or, or boat dealership, it just refers you to the requirements in the C2 zone that we require everywhere else, which is the 60% brick and stone and all of that. All of those requirements would apply to anything other than a new car dealership, which could look like that. Or that, you know, whatever, again, whatever they're, they're dictated that by the, by the dealership. Again, other types of dealerships would have to follow our commercial requirements, which could look something like this, again, brick, more traditional building. Storage, pretty simple, has to be either within the building or behind walls. There was something in here I wanted to talk about that I noticed. Under storage, it says, let me find it. It's I. It says, "Storage shall be provided within buildings or on site behind buildings or in screened areas." My thought of this is that there won't really be behind the buildings. These buildings are gonna be pretty visible from all the way around, so I think we should take out that behind buildings. It either needs to be in the building or behind a wall. Because of where Mountain View and Main Street is, these, these buildings are gonna be visible all the way around, so. That's just one, one thing I noticed I wanted to change. The display pedestals, talks about that. They are allowed in the front setback area, the way that this is written. One per 100 feet, but they can cluster them. And again, no closer than two feet from the property line. That's the way this reads. Again, if we want to make changes, or if you have any comments on that, you can certainly, certainly look at it. Kind of what they look like. Lighting, the lighting is pretty simple. Lighting has to meet city standard. This is our, basically our city standard commercial parking lot light. And right now, that's what the, the ordinance would require them to have.
And I've seen the shorter lights for autos, auto dealerships. I don't know if we'd consider that or not.
These, I mean, these apparently we did taller because of, Jonathan might know, the photometric study that we did, so that's why they have the base. If they want something shorter, and we may talk to them. Typically, what we want is consistency, right, through the whole, through the whole thing. So, and we've done this with other commercial areas where they have their own light, but we let them do it through the whole thing. So we may look at that if, if the dealerships are all, you know, looking at a different type of light. I think we'd be okay with that, again, as long as it was consistent throughout the whole thing.
Gotcha.
Landscaping, the real landscaping here is gonna be, again, along Mountain View, along Main Street, you know, along, along the streets. There's a requirement for trees, for trees based on the amount of parking area, but they don't necessarily have to be within the parking lot. The dealers don't really want trees all through the parking lot. So this is an example of what it's not going to look like. This picture up in the corner, it's gonna be probably more like this, again, where you'll have landscaping on the exterior. I like this one better, right? So trees all along the street, all along the frontage, but not within the parking lot area necessarily. And again, another one, just showing landscaping, trees all on the outside, but likely not within the parking lot. Again, this is the kind of layout we're looking at. So there would be landscape buffers required along Mountain View, along the center street they're using, and then along Main Street, not as much interior landscaping. The interim facilities, as we talked about, right now, the ordinance would allow for, for two years is what the timeframe is in the ordinance, a temporary building or facility, so that they could start a used dealership ahead of time, you know, sooner, before starting the new dealership. They would have to meet all the other requirements, basically, landscaping, they'd have to pave it all, obviously. It's probably really just the structure that we're talking about, would be temporary. These are some temporary structures I found. I don't know if it would be anything like this, but these are examples of kind of temporary buildings that I found. Signs are important to you, and they are very important to the dealers. And it talks about all these different signs through the ordinance. There would be obviously kind of internal circulation signage. There would be along, they're kind of interior street and Main Street. I think we're talking more typical-type monument signs. And then larger signs along Mountain View. The ordinance also talks about balloons and banners and temporary-type signage stuff. And then again, I'm not saying these are the signs or these are the signs that we want, but again, probably two or three larger signs along Mountain View. Maybe it'll be Harriman, Auto Mall, whatever it is. It would probably advertise all the dealers on a couple larger signs along Mountain View. That's what I have for the auto mall special district. Questions, comments, problems?
I, I just have two. Do we need to address anything about the maintenance that goes along sometimes with the dealerships?
Maintenance?
The maintenance facilities?
Like a service center in them?
Exactly.
Like, what, do you want to?
Saying, are we covered with other, I know this is an overlay, but are we covered inside of our other zones? Or do we need to put something special in here to address, you know, storage of oil and all of the other stuff that goes with a maintenance tail?
Yeah, I mean, it talks about storage, but...
Most people have servicing.
Yeah, they're all gonna have a service, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know if we needed to address anything on that, is all I'm trying to say. I, it probably is already in our zone that is the normal zone, because it's more of a, like, oil change facilities and things like that. But I, I don't know. I'm just asking if you guys had looked into that.
We hadn't. So we'll look at it, yeah.
And then my other thing is, I know that you're trying to attract people, but trees every 30 feet are almost the opposite of that. Along, I get wanting to have trees along the park strip, but it seems really close along the front edge of a dealership that every 30 feet of every dealership I've ever seen. So I could see the dealer having an issue with that, if that's really what we're trying to attract.
We could, we could clump the trees.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I was gonna say, does it, does it say every 30 or does it say?
It says every 30 feet along the public, private right-of-ways. So I, I'm just saying, I don't know the right answer. It just seemed like a lot of trees if you're trying to get people to look at cars.
And we could say per 30 feet, you know, and then again, they could, they could cluster them.
We, we have been sharing this with potential investors, and we've not heard that particular concern.
Then I'm good, I just didn't know.
Obviously, we want to make sure the streetscape is attractive, but we also want to make sure we have visibility as well, so we'll, we'll relook at that.
I, I don't know the right number. I just was curious. That was my two issues.
And I was gonna bring the one, the, the part that's missing from here is, that's new for dealerships is car towers.
Yeah, I wanna look that up.
Five or more tall.
I think that's the first time we've heard that.
Yeah, I haven't heard that, so we will look those up and figure that out.
600 feet, you could have a six-car tower.
Well, yeah, that's the question. And I, and I think they would look great along Mountain View Corridor and be allowed along Mountain View, but do we want them on Main Street, for example? On the Main Street side?
Or would they even want to do that? But yeah, you're probably right to require it.
I think along Mountain View, it makes sense, but do, do we want them along Main Street?
Correct.
And we'll look at them and see if that, yeah.
And, yeah, they're, they're tall.
Yeah, that's, I've never seen one, so I'm, I'll Google it when we get done and figure it out, yeah.
Do you know if, like, car washes, like, is part of the zone? You know what I mean? Like, you might have dealerships that say...
If it's part of their facility, then that's, that's all gonna, you know, if it's a service center or if they do anything like that within the facility, that's all gonna be fine. You know, it's basically an accessory to that.
Yeah, the Ford dealership off of I-15 has car dealership service and the new, new cars, so. They pretty much have it all in there.
And maybe we need to look, because it does say service.
I just noticed none of our standard, we don't have any standards related to the service component.
Yeah.
Or a car wash aspect, which would be service still.
Yeah. Because you don't want, like, restaurant or something attached to it.
Let us look at, maybe adding something.
Like I said, in the underlying zone of C, I don't remember what it is, I think it's C1 or C2. It probably is covered. I just want to make sure it's covered enough in the, between the two zones put together.
Go for it.
However...
We had been talking about doing this as an overlay at one point in time.
Right.
But now this is going to be the base district.
It's not gonna be an overlay, so we've gotta make sure.
There's no underlying zone.
We've gotta make sure that's all in there.
That's what I'm trying to say is technically, we need to make, we're gonna have to pull all of that stuff in, you know, even potentially a gas.
Or refer it to whatever, but I'm just making sure.
Potentially a gas station. If you look at the auto mall, they do have, at the beginning of the auto mall, so you can fill up your tank when you buy your new car, which is gas stations.
Any other items, city, city planning commission? Any other questions?
Okay, we'll make a few changes, and like I said, then we'll have a public hearing in two weeks.
Okay. Then it sounds like we'll just continue this item without date, so turn to the Planning Commission for a motion.
A motion to adjourn?
To continue.
Continue the item.
I'll continue, sir. I want to adjourn, too.
We'll do that in a second.
I move to continue file number Z2018-13 without date.
Second? Second. We have Andrea with the motion to continue and Andrew with a second. We'll start with Lauren.
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
And Brody?
Yes.
And is there any additional chair and commission comments or items to be addressed? All right, the next city meeting will be City Council Wednesday, September 12, 2018 at 7:00 PM, and the next Planning Commission meeting, which is Thursday, September 20, which will be at 5:00 PM. And now, motion to adjourn?
Hold on, so the actual public meeting is at 7, right?
Public is at 7, but work meeting will start at 5.
Okay, perfect.
Correct. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.